Thank you all for coming out this evening. By way of lineup, we have a public hearing. And our reading agenda, our local thoughts, and as we've always done, we'll open it up for questions, comments, concerns from residents. But before we get there, we have a very special night. I see a lot of friendly, smiling faces this evening. Tonight, we have the distinction of honoring our long-term employees. All of these folks have been here 25 years or more, and they truly, truly are the engine that makes this place run 24/7 and even sometimes 365 days a year. So, we're going to put them on the table. The first will start with everyone's, I think everyone's friend at Fort Park, our superintendent of recreation, Kirk Mayford. He's been here 25 years. First started work at the park through maintenance. He quickly rose to be the evening park supervisor and then after the weekend supervisor. After a brief break, he worked in the running of the street for a little while. Kirk returns to the park as a senior supervisor. And after two weeks at the park, Kirk filled the position of superintendent since September of 2000. Kirk oversees all aspects of the park, pool, and Centennial Gardens. You'll see Kirk all over the park doing every job when needed. And Kirk was absolutely instrumental when we reworked the pool a couple of years ago. A lot of dedication, so let's give a round of applause for Kirk. And we'll stay at the park with another member for 25 years, that's Sheila McCannby, 25 years. Sheila has been a staple at the park, known as Queenie Mom. She's a jack of all trades. She keeps the pool building clean, babysits children while their parents attend exercise class, proves tennis, watches over tiny town, and she's always had an upper registration and a meal or some. Sheila, 25 years. So the next person again, 25 years, I think one of the first people I met, a community trustee and a notable sponsor of ours, and that is Jimmy Cool. Jimmy grew up in Little Park, Tenth Dale City, Fort Park, Amora. On graduation, he worked as a welder in construction. Married by Margaret, who also grew up at Fort Park. And have two wonderful children, Jackie and Alice. He was hired at McHale Public Works in 1995 and assigned to the library. He loves working for the village, and he's currently the senior maintainer, attending to all the village buildings. But I think the library is really where it's sponsored, so congratulations. Next, another longstanding member of our public works, Joe Carron. For nearly 13 years, Joe worked as a sanitation engineer. As sanitation engineer, Joe learned the operation of whole equipment, techniques, and methods in waste collection, as well as sanitation collection routes and recycling routes. In April of 2020, Joe was promoted to sanitation and labor supervisor. As sanitation labor supervisor, he oversee sanitation and the recycling crews. He's reliable, coming to work every day, 6:15 a.m., like most of us are up on that time. He'll organize the crews and work the schedules for that day. As supervisor, Joe also follows all concerns for residents on a daily basis. He's married Rita for 19 years, is the proud father of 14-year-old son John, and he's a volunteer fire fighter in Fort Park, I'm sorry, the Malder Fire Department, and serving that village for the past 29 years. Joe, congratulations. Another 25-year person, Mary Ann Cumming from DPW. Back in 1997, she was working with accounting department helping with the tax bill on a part-time job. Then she heard that there was a help needed at DPW, and she was sent to. The superintendent recruited her and stayed there for the last 25 years as a part-time person, which she found, she calls home, DPW. And 25 years later, she's still there. She's married almost 61 years to her husband Ryan, and have a wonderful daughter, son-in-law, son, and daughter-in-law, who have less than six precious grandchildren. But their grandchildren are now adults, and the ice cream on the cake will be great-grandparents in December. Congratulations. And she said life's been good, and she loves working in the village. Mary, I thank you for that. Our last 25, celebrating the 25th anniversary of the village is Mike Saville. Although it's 25 years as a police officer, he's active, operating the village in the two things I saw say, but it's probably more like over 50 years when you combine your service as a police officer, 25 years, and I believe 27 years as a volunteer in our fire department, especially in the last five years as chief. I think we all say we can know if we don't go to be a chief. And Mike, thank you for keeping all our residents safe in multiple jobs, multiple hours. I'm sure that applies to 24 hours a day, so thank you very much, Mike. Congratulations, 25 years. Let me move on to 35 years. Billy's ass. Billy's running Fort Park beans, graduated from high school here in high school in 1976, married Kathy, who was in 1979, and joined the Fort Park cooking lab department in 1979, which still serves. As a graduate from high school, he worked 12 years in operations for Trotter Airline. He was hired in the village in 1984 as dispatch to the police department. He then transferred to public works in 1986 as a mechanic, and then in 1991, went to the highway department as a motor equipment operator, and now he currently works as a motor equipment operator in the sanitation department. I think Billy's still involved with the fire department and the antique truck. So thank you for all your work in the village and as a volunteer fireman, volunteer fireman. And let's have a round of applause for 35 years. Last thing, we can start with that man. Evelyn Schultz, 40 years. Evelyn's a first person in the presidency when they walk into the village hall, and always greeted with a smile, kind word, and an outfit every holiday. She helps residents in all aspects, as when they walk in, you know, you don't know what's going to come your way. She works for the smile. Prior to her work experience, she worked at the US Department of Commerce in New York City, working for Kennedys and Roosevelt's. She developed great interest in travel and a desire to see the world, and was entertainers with stories of her escapades, whether it be with her friend, and caller Mary Ann, son Kenny, or her beloved mom. Evelyn's loved all things German, has kept her occupied on weekends, traveling to the Oktoberfest in the area, no matter what month of the year it is, and no matter what month of the year it may be to partake in jogging, food and music. Evelyn's worked for 11 men, starting with Mayor Henry Friedman, an emirat of elected officials these past 20 years, and Evelyn, a competitive ice skater in a youth, who is known for her famous Schulz Six Spin. I guess when you come up, you can show us. Went on her way to spin away into becoming a hot soul, the Fort Park family. Evelyn, we have the entire village board trustees and all of our residents. Thank you for your noble performance for the last 25 years.
Watch your step.
So, next thing, the public hearing, and I should consider a little more bending of section 73-2 of the Incorporated Village of Plural Park, with respect to the interest of senior citizens' taxes.
Read the notice. Incorporate Village of Plural Park Notice of Top Hearing Local Law Number Three of 2022. Please take notice that pursuant to Article 9 of the New York State Constitution, the provisions of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Plural Park and the municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York as amended. The public hearing will be held in the Incorporated Village of Plural Park, Village Hall, One Plural Boulevard, and Old Park in York, on the fourth day of October 2022 at 8:00 p.m. in the evening of that day, to consider enactment of a local law entitled, "A Local Law Mandating Section 73-2 of the Incorporated Village of Plural Park with Respect to Income Limits and Senior Citizen Taxes Act." This local law shall take effect upon its filing with the Secretary of State, by local law trustees, Incorporated Village of Plural Park, New York, Seasoned Water, and Truck for the dates of September 23rd, 2022, and is published in the official paper of Incorporated Village of Plural Park, New York, and posted according to law.
I'd like to announce that the board has seen that for the nature of the declaration would mean that the proposed law will have no significant impact on the environment. I'd like to read the legislative intent. Recently, legislation was enacted mentioning section 4673, the reforming tax law, to increase the maximum income limits of senior citizen tax expenses from $29,000 to $50,000 beginning July 1st, 2022. As well, the law meant the code, so as to inform this new maximum limit. And I'd like Mike Derby for his work on this. Is there anyone in the audience who can catch me? Seeing none yet at all, or anyone on Zoom? Anybody on the board of trustees? I'd like to ask the board if there is a motion to adopt Local Law Number Three of 2022, close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. As most people have said.
Trustee Pombana, Madam Pussy Chair, Madam Pussy Stewart, Madam Pussy Longbody, Madam Ma'am Chair.
Aye. So before we move on to the agenda, we've done, is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that has any questions or comments specific to the agenda? Look, Ms. Walsh, will you still be down?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask the board to approve the regular board of trustees minutes and public hearing minutes of AAA taxi franchise renewal, both held on Tuesday, September 20, 2022, and the fourth session minutes held on Thursday, September 29, 2022. So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the scheduled accounts payable as follows. General fund, $4,6,510.26. Full fund, $69,898.55. Capital fund, zero. Re-grant total, $1,076,450.78.
How long is the resolution? Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve or ratify the request to use covered facilities subject to be seen since we get insurance as the Department of Health and Health Guidelines has presented.
I'll vote aye.
I'll second. Any discussion? Good to see you all that was still in the house of residence. All in favor?
Aye.
I would ask the board to ratify the approval to commit tenant in Thomas Apophis, tenant Department of Criminal Justice Services, Public Safety Symposium, from 9/6/22 through 9/9/22, and will be opening for a cost of $389 plus meals.
How was that resolution?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana, Madam Pussy Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to hire Andrea Longbody as a full-time employee in the police department with a contractor rate of $40,900, subject to medical, drug and alcohol clearances and approval of Nessel County Civil Service Commission.
How was that resolution?
I'll second. Any discussion? I would just like to mention that this was reviewed by the board. Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
I'm accused myself.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the below listed block party applications in accordance with section 32D, subject to the approval of the police department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
I would ask the board to authorize the refund request to the below listed 32D as presented.
I'll vote aye.
I'll second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that the special use application of state view on the L C of 75 Hope Avenue, Plural Park, New York, to open a cafe as a type-two action as that term is defined in secret and will not have a significant effect on the environment.
How was that resolution?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to read a document as play flying policy, which was originally adopted on August 21st, 1980.
How was that resolution?
I'll second it. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the renewable franchise agreement of AAA taxi, also nominated to be pleasing for franchise agreement for a term of three years and authorize the mayor to sign said agreement.
How long is the resolution?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine the construction of road and drainage improvements of various roads in the village, a type-two action as that term is defined in secret and will not have a significant effect on the environment.
I'll vote aye.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the construction of various roads in the village, including related drainage or connection, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $650,000, appropriating said amount for such purpose and authorizing issuance of bonds in a principal amount of not to exceed $150,000 to finance said appropriation.
How was that resolution?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine the construction of the policeman body communications tower as a type-two action as that term is defined in secret and will not have a significant effect on the environment.
How was that resolution?
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the construction of the grid mills to the policeman body communications tower, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $150,000, appropriating said amount for such purpose, and authorizing issuance of bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed $155,000 to finance said appropriation.
How long is the resolution?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the purchase of 100 Motorola radios in the amounts of $39,995 for the park under the New York State contract, and authorize the mayor or village administrator to sign such contract.
I'll vote aye.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
I would ask the board to award the multi-purpose hockey rink bid contract to high-end landstating and asphalt paving in a base bid amount of $649,000 plus add alternate number one with a concrete walkway of $13,000, and add alternate number four, the surface color coating of $25,000 for a total award in the amounts of $687,000, and authorize the mayor or village administrator to sign said contract.
How was that resolution?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
And I would ask the board to establish a standard workday for elected official Trustee Michael Longbody and report the following days' work to the New York State and local employees' planning system, based on the regular activities maintained and submitted by Trustee Longbody to the court of this body.
How was that resolution?
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Trustee Longbody.
I'm accused myself.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Now, we will turn to our board of votes, and we'll start with Deputy Mayor, Attorney General.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. First, for our fire forum, the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, has designated October 9th through October 15th as mayor The National Fire Protection Association, or NSFPA, has designated October ninth through October fifteenth as National Fire Prevention Week. Do you know what part of your family, friends, and coworkers safe by going to FPW dot org? That's fire prevention dot org. For valuable fire safety information, community education activities, games, maps, videos, and tip sheets. Most important, come to our Flo Park Fire Department's open house on Sunday, October sixteenth, from ten AM to twelve thirty PM at the Walton Field parking lot, of course, with the police department. There, your family will learn about fire prevention and FPFD improvement opportunities. Plus, enjoy demonstrations, interact with kids' activities, and free park tour refreshments. This year's theme is fire, wait, plan, or escape at FPW dot org. And while you're there, please thank our volunteer firefighters and rescue EMTs for their service to all of us. That's FT, FPFD Open House, Sunday, October sixteenth, ten AM, of course, from the police department. Make sure you have working home and apartment access detectors in your homes for safety. Uh, Department of Public Works, it's fall in the Flo Park. Please enjoy all its beauty. As the leaves begin to fall, we ask residents and businesses to gather leaves, put them in clear plastic bags, and place the bags that occur on respective yard grace day, which is the sanitation collection day opposite to recycling day. Professional landscapers are required to remove leaves from property completely. Our road program continues. Spooner Street and the Spooner Park are being prepared for the asphalt paving. Those will be completed in one to two weeks. For the Conservation Society, Centennial Gardens continues to remain open for extended weekend hours, nine AM to six PM, or dusk, whichever comes first, Saturdays and Sundays. Save the date for our magnificent third annual Fairy Forest Festival on Sunday, October, excuse me, Saturday, October twenty-ninth, one to four PM. Adults and children will be fascinated by this unique gardens adventure. The exciting details and photos from our last two festivals see anyone's spectacular Flo Parks and Centennial Gardens Facebook page. For the chambers of conquest in our businesses, both our Flo Park and Oreo chambers are happy to see two major building development projects moving forward uh, in a series of successive architectural award or ARB meetings. We know there is a little bit more with those projects, um, that we do. We know the, uh, trustee Chiara will provide the details. The Cobra Avenue Chamber Street Theater is almost here on Saturday, October fifteenth. The avenue will be transformed into a fun-filled place for families featuring our amazing Flo Parks, Astor Manor businesses, family-friendly live music, food trucks, mumps, and a Flo Park Lions Club pumpkin patch. Lots more surprises don't miss for fun, shopping and dining local on Cobra from eleven AM to five PM on the fifteenth. And one work in taking place will be, um, something for parents, um, called Raising Resilient and Responsible Teens. The Syosset Central Council, PTAs, and one of the Syosset Central High School, Digital Personnel Services, working with CREW, which is the Coalition Foundation of Resources for Education Wellness. That's a Flo Park committee that was established several years ago with the ultimate goal of, um, helping to curtail some of the substance abuse. Trustee Chiara and I are the representatives on that committee. And they have put together and had a discussion, um, including the number of Suwannee Central High School, members of that district family for a conservation that was as parents and guardians and raising resilient and responsible teenagers. We got adults that lose psychiatrists, psychologists, counselors, social workers, and members of the class of twenty-two who have their success stories to tell. This will take place on the evening of October seventeenth at eight PM in the Suwannee High School, boyhood, and all of our parents and community members. If anyone is interested, then we are invited to attend. And finally, um, coming up this weekend, please take a moment to recognize our wonderful high school students and teens. The Flo Park Memorial Homecoming Parade will take place at eleven AM October eighth. This is coming Saturday on the third annual High School around, um, Tulip Avenue, down Tulip, and then back to the old system, back to the High School. It's a great experience. And if you're a Suwannee High School fan, which we hope you are, their homecoming is the same day. They're correct, the same place that we moved down by Suwannee High School. So please come out to cheer on our fabulous high school students and teens. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Just to hand off, we mentioned about the fire department and their, uh, this weekend. Um, please, if you have any interest in joining the fire department, please come down. As you can see, with, uh, some of our long-term employees, there was some volunteer firemen, and they've been there, respected departments, police seven, thirty-nine years. So really, people don't volunteer something to stay around that long unless they're getting a lot out of it. And, uh, like people said, you get a lot more out of something if you put something in. So please come down and talk to us and with the fire department, uh, our wonderful organization. Trustee Chiara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to report that the proposed buildings at forty-one, sixty-one, Cobra Avenue and One Carnation Avenue, Centennial Hall have been both conditionally approved by the Architectural Review Board. The architects will now complete construction drawings and submit to the building department for building code review and submit to the county for site management approval. Once all crews are seen, the construction on both projects may begin. I would like to thank the ARB, all the residents who made constructive comments on the projects, and both owners and developers for listening to the ARB, ARBs, and residents' concerns and addressing the most of them. We are all looking forward to both these projects moving forward. Again, my quote.
And trustee Stewart.
Hi, good evening. Uh, first, I'd like to take another minute to thank and recognize our village employees for their combined, really, twenty, fifty years of service to our wonderful village. Um, this village is certainly a better place for having them here. I'd also like to thank the John Looms Tramp's PTA for their well-organized, um, full month sale and also for the reminder call at five minutes to six tonight that I forgot to pick up mine. So I was able to save them from twenty-four hours inside a house building. So, uh, PTA does very, a lot of wonderful fundraisers so that they can provide, um, some extracurricular activities for their students. So thank you for all your efforts. Uh, so for the rec center, I was very happy to attend the annual business day on Sunday, uh, Saturday, September twenty-fourth, which raises money and awareness for breast cancer research. It is truly amazing to see what we're on a mission to accomplish. I'd like to thank all the dedicated volunteers for another great event. I'd like to extend some congratulations to our Little League Award winners. We have district champion, district twenty-nine champions in both baseball and softball. Uh, Little League is another example of a cadre of volunteers coming together to make something more thought of in our community. Uh, while basketball's for me, it's hockey, keep the rec center full and busy several days of the week. Today, we also, tonight, we also approved, uh, a contract to have our multi-purpose rink updated. So we will have a state-of-the-art multi-purpose rink in very short order. For the Long Island Railroad, the village continues to maintain open lines of communication with three TC and the MTA regarding the, what they now call the full completion of the project. The governor had a large press conference earlier this week and said the bracket is complete. There are some items that are not complete, including some things here in our hometown, particularly the gate at Tannus Street. Uh, the village board has been in touch with Senator Cameron's office, as well as Assemblywoman, uh, the Council Wyche's office. And we have also had conversations with the, uh, New York Governor's long hour representative regarding our concerns for safety at the gate. We will continue to keep our residents updated as, uh, as we have more information.
Thank you, trustee Stewart. Trustee Longbody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Flo Park Library, the library has launched its new homepage for the website. Visit the website to see the new layout and all the library has to offer. This Thursday, Library Book Club, where we can discuss the night watchman. The library continues the whole English language learning classes now from December seventeenth. Contact Lindrely, Lindrely Nassar at five one six, eight six seven, three five eight zero to register. October is National Pizza Month. Library is celebrating this Saturday from two to three-thirty with Zeph's Fire Truck Pizza, serving his delicious pizza. And we're also happy to have an entry from our own Flo Park library comment there as well. Thursday, October eleventh, from seventeen PM, Council of Paul Mayford will hold a step-by-step workshop for high school sophomores in navigating the college process and all that is involved. Um, that is a very interesting workshop for sophomores, that want to see what's involved with the college process. Uh, includes financial aid information and whatnot. Um, it's very helpful. Uh, reminder, October twenty-sixth, distributor night, tickets are available and must be purchased ahead of time. The details for these and many other events are listed at www.floroparklottery.org. For the Floville Studio, a few months ago, I mentioned about the computer upgrading studio. That has begun and has been halted slightly due to some compatibility issues during installation. However, it is moving forward thankfully, as well as an upgrade to a more secure infrastructure protection. The end of October marks the tenth anniversary of Superstorm Sandy. Well, right now, all of our reports and prayers are focused on our fellow residents, family, and friends in Florida and California as they recover from Ian. The studio has completed a thirty-minute show entitled Sandy, Ten Years After. It is thirty minutes of follow-up video that captures the initial days after the storm, highlighting all the hard work by our various village departments, as well as our residents, to restore our great village. It will debut on Monday, October twenty-fourth, at nine PM. And as always, please visit www.floresstarwork.com to see shows dates and times. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Walsh. On the, uh, just following what trustee Stewart mentioned about the third track. Governor announced the state that was complete. I think it's complete that the third track is in and it's operational, but not only in Flo Park, but along the main line, there's still a lot ahead that we've yet, uh, resolved. And, uh, we still got a little bit of work ahead of us to clean up. Uh, as always, like, uh, those illustrative journalists, Dan, or first of all, are everything on this topic and, uh, dealing with all the area of issues that still exist that we could resolve. Uh, with regards to Belmont, um, today, the, uh, New York State Gaming Association announced a confirmation of a New York State Gaming Facility Location Board. Um, not specific for Belmont, but the, uh, warning of casinos in downtown area. Um, they will have a community advisory committee structured on the internet. Um, if a developer wants to put CEO's our place, uh, three out of five members of the committee have to vote for it. Um, you can look this up. It's at, uh, www.nycasinos.nyc.gov. As always, uh, keep our eye on this. On this side, you know the news stories to, uh, see what's happening, what is not happening, uh, in our area. Uh, separately, uh, spoke to Niagara this afternoon, and, uh, by the end of the month, we'll call it the mini car and fence will be in place along the Emerald Park lot, um, to further protect the residents and get the, uh, fence further away from the residents' homes higher up, um, and where it should have been when they get going. Once again, I thank Niagara for working with us and, uh, hopefully improving, uh, the lives of the residents in the west side. And with that, um, I'd just like Felix, who just backed me, for being here again. And I speak right with Rafi from Lindsay Media's on, um, Zoom. Thanks for your coverage, as always. And speaking of coverage, for those of you who have not signed up for our filing the email, if you go on the internet, Friday, you can sign up. But if you do sign up, the Friday after a board meeting, our board reports will be on there along with, uh, two or three other things that are happening in the village, along with, uh, links to a board meeting and, uh, incentives. With that, I'd ask for most of those to post on the board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to now open it up for residents to ask any questions or comments. Start here in Village Hall.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a long time. Uh, Matthew Sexton, uh, split sixty-sixth Lud Avenue, um, unfortunately, also interim president of the South Sexton Association. How are you doing this evening? Uh, I would love to come here today and say how awesome you are, and you are all doing awesome, but I do have a serious complaint, and that is about the traffic at John Looms Childs and Tyson. Um, Tyson Avenue turned into a five on Highway this morning. Um, it is sad that at this point in time, we not only have, um, people from law enforcement doing crosswalk, but we also have a member of the police department there. Someone this morning who actually had to get out of their car and talk to people about traffic. This chaos, I think I've lived in six, I, I think I've been in sixty-six four or five years by now, I don't even know. Um, it's gotten so bad to the point that I don't try not to drive near Tyson anymore in the morning, especially in the morning when students are being, um, admitted to the school building. Uh, but this morning, I had to get gas, and then I went over to the sun, the love, and get coffee before I went to the wonderful world of the Bronx. Uh, and I broke down my face, and it was a mess. And the safest thing at one point for me to do was to stop my car, sit on my brakes for about thirty or forty-five seconds because there was that much chaos at the intersection. I'm well aware of the fact that our police department has met with the school. We have come up with different plans to try to improve the chaos at Tyson. It is sad that the school, uh, whoever's in charge of John Looms Childs, I don't know at this point if it's up to the school board, has decided that the situation is okay. I have never seen any school where there has been parking allowed on the street, the same area where the students are admitted and discharged. I've never seen that. We have two amazing streets. One of them is called Flower, the other is called Elizabeth. I actually had to look up Flower because I couldn't remember the name of it. I know it's a little bit of a challenge because parents might actually have to let their student, let their children out of the left-hand side of the car. But considering they're already doing that on Tyson Avenue, creating a five-lane road, seems we may have to come up with.
What do you mean by five?
I was showing you a picture. I was sitting for thirty seconds.
I believe you, I just thought.
It was five.
Was it fresh?
Yeah, it was, it was two cars on this side. I was actually in the middle because there was somebody else, there was double cars, and then somebody else over there, two more cars over here. And unfortunately, it seems as if the school and school district just care of the rest.
I think so, it means to be.
Yeah, this is an accident waiting to happen. And again, I know we're dressed as at the school. If the school does not want to educate parents on how to do this correctly, then unfortunately, not to raise revenues, we need to seriously think about educating the for them, and that comes through tickets. If we're going to have one police officer there, maybe one, why don't we should have a whole police force there? And we should be, uh, writing tickets for double parking, uh, jaywalking, not following any of the laws because the school district and the schools does not have the ability to do this.
Okay. Yeah, so since the picture, and thank you for that.
Yeah, it's just gotten way too out of control. Like I said, it's been like four or five years.
I'm sure Flower was a pretty good.
I thought everybody voted for me as a school board, this is a good place by now, but, uh, unfortunately, we still have to. But thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Makes some way in the room.
Uh, Ron Sullivan, forty-seven Cunningham Avenue. Uh, I don't know who I should direct this question to. It's about parking on, uh, uh, houses, residential houses. Like, I don't know who to direct it to or.
Well, well, it's a good idea.
Uh, the one in Sandy, you're only allowed to park in the driveway. All right, if you have a single car garage, you have single cars back to back. Two-car garage, then you're allowed two if your driveway is wide enough.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
All right, um, over the last few years, I've noticed a lot of people just disregard that. Not only disregard, literally parking on the lawn. And then if they don't park on the lawn, then they have cement truck come and they widen their driveway. Now, it's two cars, three cars, of course. I've go over the village over the years, and then, uh, did a little follow-up, and he said it was violation, this issue. Now, I don't know what violation was, it's a loan, and that's it. They pay a fine, and they're still allowed to park there.
No, they have to undo it if they were not agreeing to the variance.
Boom. I have a few addresses.
Yeah, if you want to just answer it on camera, if you just want to give it to them, I'll sort of look at it. I don't want to, we'll take it up.
Well, I have a lot of places, it's a secret.
No, I just don't want you to, that's, that's compromised.
They cement, I don't know.
I have twenty.
Four or five, four fifty, four or better.
Okay.
They cemented, they have a different one. There's three cars across that. You get another one, five twenty, three twenty-two with that in it. Single car garage, it's a garage, two cars wide. And, uh, Edmond goes this address, twenty-six vandal. They cemented the whole side of their house, the whole side. Sometimes in the year, they put tents up there. Now it's just cars. It's, they have, they added a driveway on the side of their house. Uh, one fifty-five beach, they widened their driveway and area. Single car garage. I mean, it's just a few.
A lot of them have variance. A lot of them have variances, some do have variances, I mean, we'll have to look into this, and we can get back to the variances or if not, if violations have been a little big issue.
Variants, the cement over heavy, front door?
No, usually they are, they are really careful, they can do certain limits of what they can do for variance.
There are certain limits, and sometimes you get a temporary variance, what we call just a special exception, for two years at a time, for people that have cars, that have multiple cars with their household, there's a permanent variance associated with the property. So it depends on.
Multiple cars, so that you can just change the rules in cemental areas?
They have to apply, they've done for a hearing, they present their case, and if they satisfy the requirements of the code, they're granted a special exception that allows them to park side by side on a pad, and it's a two-year, and it's renewed for two years or six years, and they have to go back in and show the same need that they actually have, residents living in the house, they have a car.
But this registered by the whole process.
Maybe the whole, yeah, the process.
All right, I just.
I don't know whether all these have.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Just roughly, how many variances do you give a year? How many are there out there?
One or two a month, maybe not even one a month.
One a month, so the average of twelve a year.
I'd say it has a follow-up.
Over the last five years, we've sixty variances, so that's sixty-two.
No, no, no.
Oh, we just wondered, I'm sorry, you said one a month, right?
I, I, I don't, I didn't say that.
No, I know you didn't, if you said one a month, you gave.
I don't, I don't think.
So that's twelve a year over the last five years, you're giving out sixty.
I didn't.
But Renee did have a football for drivers, the variance is like, one a month?
I'm, I'm saying possible, for drivers, yeah.
Yeah, I'm really speaking about drivers.
In our group.
So we gave, no, I'm sorry, I thought you said you gave out sixty there.
I didn't say.
No, I, I can't, I'm not interested in you. You gave out one variance a month.
What's that, I'm saying, usually that one a month comes before the board, is normal.
Oh, so it's not true, I'm sorry.
Not at all.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some of the nice, some are for, yeah, for two years.
Just so you understand, too, the rationale for that is people with multiple cars, we don't allow parking on the street, so they got to put their cars somewhere, they have children, boy cars, et cetera. You have to make some room for comedy. Those are the, that's the rationale why you allow.
I totally understand that. I grew up in this village, I had six drivers in my house when I was growing up.
I mean, the proportion of all the night, too, is not, you can't.
Yeah, these are just, I mean, these are just four off the top. I don't know, maybe there's, there's tons, but, I mean, to incorporate the village to our west, our village, to our east, to the manor, I walk around there every time, I see drivers wide. It looks horrible. It opens up the door for illegal apartments, extra dwell, you know, that's, that's what it is. Prevents rainwater, and just the aesthetics of the village.
When they come for the special exception, they have to show their registration, and they have to be card-registered to that address, so there is a control when illegal parking is issued that way.
They're living there, they changed their licenses there, and they could do.
You're talking about committing fraud, is that, is that?
Well, yeah.
Registered cars to a house that they.
Yeah, it, it, it's.
It's usually gets registration for the whole thing, like your last name, so they're like family.
People will commit fraud to benefit themselves. And I, I'm not trying, I'm just, and I know.
It's something with the process, I see.
No, and I understand that, and I understand that, the problem is high, but these people knew that buying is hard, they knew the limits, or they should, but I don't think why we should all suffer because someone wants an extra car, or someone, you know.